Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter? Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Gin?
Here.
And Height?
Present.
The quorum is present.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Taylor is going to lead us in prayer.
Please bow with me. Father God, thank you for this opportunity to be, be with your presence tonight, Lord. We just want to thank you for being able to be here and meet, even though it's virtually, to meet and do the business of the city of North Little Rock. Lord, we want you to bless this meeting, bless our citizens, bless our constituents, bless this election season, bless this upcoming holiday season. Keep us safe, keep us secure in all that we do in all of our travels and all of our gatherings and non-gatherings. Lord, we just want to go into the new year with all of your, all of your blessings and oversight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. How about a minute? Can I approve the minutes, please? Give me a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the minutes. Anybody discussion? Seeing none, on the vote?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We have communications. Anybody want to pull one? I'm showing four. Seeing none, um...
This is accepted by all four.
Second.
Baxter, Ms. Ross, thank you very much. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. As requested, we've got the second meeting of the month. Our CFO is going to give us an executive summary of the financial report. Ember?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give you a brief overview of our September financial report. Things to keep in mind, that we keep our monthly financial reports on the cash basis of accounting. At the end of the year, we convert those to the modified accrual. So when you're looking at revenues such as sales tax, franchise fees, the hotel and restaurant tax, and properties tax, those come in two months in arrears, so we won't see nine months of those reported. If you look at the general fund, we recently got our October sales tax, so I wanted to give you an update on that. Our city portion of sales tax were down from the prior year approximately $149,000 or 4.7%, while the county piece was above prior year approximately $60,000 or 4.8%. Now, compared to budget, in total, we're up about $500,000 or 5.6% of budget through August, because the October receipts are for the month of August. Property tax, license and permits, and intergovernmental revenues are all in line with budget. Franchise fees are seeing, are below prior year, but don't be alarmed when looking at that number. It's because of the first revenues of the franchise fees are dedicated to the 2019 capital improvement bond, so those have to first go to the debt service. Fines and fees and charges for services are slightly below budget. When we look at the expenses of the general fund through September, that would be 75% of the budget. There's only two departments that are slightly above that threshold, but I expect all departments to be in line with budget at year-end, so there's no concerns there. FEMA on the flood on October 13th, since you last got an update on the flood, we've received an additional $176,000, and that was related to debris removal. That brings our total reimbursements to $616,000. We also expect to get another $581,000 in the next four to six weeks. That's for our emergency protective measures. I wanted to also let you all know about a grant that the finance department has been working on with the state. It's the coronavirus relief funds. This is money from the state that they were awarded under the CARES Act, but you had to be a city of at least $500,000 in population to get that, so we were not directly awarded that from the federal government. This was a very quick turnaround time. Not many cities have received their money yet, but last week of our 2.468 allocation, we've received $2,393,000. I want to stress, this was a reimbursement grant, so we had to provide details of all of our eligible expenses. So we only have about $75,000 left to be reimbursed under that grant, and I've submitted the documentation, and I think we'll get that this week or next week. If we move on to the street fund, the revenues and expenditures are in line with budget. There's no concerns there. If we move on to the parks fund, their expenditures are at approximately 63% of budget. Remember, I mentioned September would be 75% of budget, so they've done a good job holding those expenditures down, because they have been hit a little bit with the decline in revenue because of COVID. The IT fund is approximately at 76% of budget. There's no concerns there with them going over budget. The 2019 capital improvement fund, this is where we issued the $10 million bond for the Justice Center. As of the end of September, we've spent approximately $4.2 million of that $10 million. So that's a quick overview of the September financial statements, and we continue to monitor those every day. Any questions?
Ross?
I do, on the, on the pandemic funds that we've been receiving, do we still have some applications that we have out, potential funds coming in?
We have one, and it was an application for enhancing our teleworking capabilities, and it's for $75,000. And I had to pull all the detail of the POs, then they wanted a list of who received the equipment, the check date, the vendor, and I just submitted all the additional information today, but we'll, we should get that back.
So is there any potential for more funding through the CARES Act that you know of, or we, I know we don't know until the funds come available, but...
I mean, we continue to monitor it. We hope the federal government will give us direct aid, but you know, until after next week, I don't foresee that we'll have any updates at this time.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it coming. Let me tell you guys, Ember and her staff have done a magnificent job. We, she and her people have set the gold standard as far as the state's concerned, and she was very active in helping the state get this whole thing set up. So very impressed with what you and your people have done, Ember. I mean, to get, to get this money back so quickly is really, you know, helps, and we have plenty of cash anyway, but now to get it all back, you know, we do appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
While we're talking about budget, let me remind everyone that, Mr. Height, do you have a question?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Ember a question about FEMA money. Is she still there?
I am.
Have we, at this point in time, have we received all the FEMA money that we're going to receive, or at least know that it's on the way? Is there any FEMA money that's still outstanding that we haven't?
Go ahead. FEMA money, yes.
When I looked at the spreadsheet before I came over here, of course, we have the dredging for the hydro, the management cost, and there was one parks project that looks like we haven't gotten the money back yet. But for the most part, we've gotten the majority of it, but the hydro is a big, big amount.
Ms. Ross?
Yeah, on, on the hydro dredging, that's a, it's 75, 25% match on that? Is that what that is?
Right.
Okay. And it was like $2 million?
Right.
Okay, thank you, Ember, very much. Oh, okay. November the 9th, yes. Everybody's out?
Maybe we need to come back to Charlie's question.
Okay, I can hear you.
Okay, we're, we're back live again. We, we had some audio difficulties. All right, Ms. Robinson, did you have a question?
Well, did, I never did hear Ember's answer to my question.
Ember's answer was that, yes, we've gotten 16 out of 17 that we filed for, except for the hydro plant, and it's coming. So yes, Leonard Montgomery and, and finances did a wonderful job of getting our money back on the flood. Is that good? All right, November the 9th, November the 9th, next council meeting, our first budget hearing is going to be at 5:00. If y'all remember last year, because Ember does such a great job, we didn't even take the whole hour, but we're going to start at 5:00 on November the 9th to go over the budget. You're going to be getting the budget?
Monday.
Monday. You'll be getting the budget Monday, so that'll give you a couple of weeks to look at it. The other thing I want to talk about while we're talking about money is because this second bit of CARES Act is probably not going to come maybe even through the rest of the year, and we don't know whether it's going to cover venues like the arena and the convention center in Little Rock. We're struggling right now. I've talked to Mayor Scott in Little Rock and Judge Hyde, and I'm going to expect that sometime between now and the end of the year, I'm going to ask you, and we're going to put it in our budget, that we're going to have to help the county fund a little bit of the arena. I got some very interesting numbers today, and I'll share with you all in the next week or so. On the amount of sales tax that the arena's generated over the years, the, the amount to the state, which I've talked to Secretary Hurst and explained to her that we just wanted some of that money back, but it was $18 million that the arena has generated in state sales tax, and it's somewhere around $4 or $5 million in North Little Rock sales tax. So at some point in time, I'm going to ask that the county and I, I believe, are going to try to split that, the county and I, the county and us, and then I believe Frank and the city of Little Rock is going to work on their convention center, and then the other six centers, event centers across the state, those cities are going to have to come in, because there's absolutely zero revenue coming into any of these event centers. So that's coming, I just want to make you aware of it. I'll get those numbers, those sales tax numbers out to you, so y'all can digest them between now and probably the end of November. Ms. Ross?
What's that, 18 million? What's the period, time period on that?
When it opened.
When it opened?
Yeah.
What year was that?
20 years. It was 2009, 2000, whatever it was, 20 years. When was it? 99.
It's 2002 somewhere, 2001, I think.
99. 99. It was basketball season in 99, I think. Yeah, Raker beams and all. Okay, I gave you a little bit of update on that. We did our presentation. Let's just go right on into new business.
R2152, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain city-owned items and other equipment as surplus, providing for auction thereof.
Move. Second.
Got a motion and a second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're getting ready to call three condemnations in a row, and I'm going to call a public hearing right now for anyone that wants to speak about the condemnation of 4929 Atkins, 108 Marvin, or 304 North Palm. If there's anyone here or online to discuss these condemnations, now's your chance. Seeing none here, seeing none online, we'll close the public hearing. Please call R2153.
R2153, a resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 4929 Atkins Street in the city of North Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Don't move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R2154, a resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 108 Marvin Street in the city of North Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structure, providing for a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and a second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R2155, a resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 304 North Palm Street in the city of North Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Wait for adoption.
Don't move.
Got a second. Motion and a second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R2156, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Placy County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Don't move.
Give me a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. On a call of public hearing, anyone here or online to talk about certain real properties in North Little Rock and liens as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of public nuisance, seeing none here, seeing none online, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O2095, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance adopting a revised energy risk management policy for the North Rock Electric Department, repealing ordinance numbers 8771, 8786, 8815, 8944, and 9181. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
How about a motion, and then we'll, question?
Don't move.
Give me a second. Got a motion and a second. Ms. Ross?
Taylor's on the line. Can we hear from Taylor?
Yeah, Amy's here.
Amy's also.
Do you want to explain it to Amy if you've got any questions?
I'll, I'll give it a shot, and then if there's any questions, we'll have to have to, online, consider, give you the questions you all had, well, earlier, this year, the Risk Management Committee needs lots of money, and last year, at the Risk Management Committee's request, we asked to adopt a hedge limit policy for the Risk Management Committee for the amounts of power that are hedged at any, to start with, from where we currently are. The mid-hedge limits that we passed at the end of last year were a five-year period. Just as the year went along and we put it into practice, we realized that because the Department, through our power manager, the Energy Authority, only generally can buy power two years out, that we were not able to stay in compliance for that additional three years. And so Taylor, Allison, our power cost analyst, and the Energy Authority worked together on a two-year hedge policy that, that works for the city, but also gives us, within the policy, the ability to look out further when there are good opportunities to buy energy at a good price, which you all did earlier this summer when we entered into a 10-year power purchase agreement. So we, so we can still look out further, but having the mandatory compliance, over a time period when we can't easily buy energy, we just found that we would rather ask you all to impose a policy that we can comply with. While we were doing that, this ordinance, the original policy was passed about five years ago, and so we just had noticed over that amount of time, you write a policy that's 30 pages long, and, and you learn things as you go through it, and so everyone on the Risk Management Committee looked at it. The changes that were made besides the hedge policy are more along the lines of things like, we had terms in the definitions that didn't appear elsewhere in the policy, so we deleted those. We had some inconsistency in the way that we use terms, so we got that straightened out. We had some terms that we felt like needed to be defined, so we added some definitions. And, and, and that's the, the bulk of the other changes to it. Instead of doing the redlined version, because there had been so many amendments, we thought it'd be a better idea just to start with a new one, and plus, it, the technical abilities of your Risk Management Committee to do the strike-throughs and underlines, when going through all that, got a little beyond us when all, all of us were going through.
This, no doubt, was the best. And this, this committee, y'all, I'm telling you, there's a whole lot of smart people sitting around the table, helping us make these decisions. Any other questions? Ms. Ross?
Well, no, you said that, you know, this is, we're changing it back to the two-year hedge policy, but then you said that they can look further out. So when they look further out, will they have to bring that back to the city council? If they...
Yes, within the policy, there is only, and I can't remember the exact times, but there's only a certain term that we can purchase power for without having city council approval. So those longer-term ones are the ones that are further out in the future, have to come back to city council, and I don't have the exact number of months on that, but, but we can't make any 10-year deals without your approval.
Any other questions? Where are we? On the motion?
We have a motion to adopt and a second. So on the roll, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O2096, Councilmember White?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending sections 1.2.4 and 4.1.3 of the North Rock Municipal Code, Chapter 9, parking regulations. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes, just wanted to explain, this is just, I, I would like to call it a little bit of housekeeping. There were some unintended consequences from the way the legislation had been written before, and we're cleaning this up, so this should help. Thank you.
Good deal. And everybody's involved, code's involved, everybody, all right, how about a motion to adopt?
Don't move. Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O2097, Councilmember Robinson?
We're going to hold that.
O2098, Councilmembers Robinson and Taylor?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a waiver of sidewalk restrictions of Section 9.11 of the subdivision ordinance for certain real property located on Van Street in the city of North Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
Got a motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Give me a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
This concludes new business.
Thank you very much. We've got quite a few public comments that were emailed in, and so sit back and relax, and Caitlin will read them to us.
This is public comments sent to the city clerk's office, and Lou being present. First one is from James Worrell. Please bring back Saturdays with the closed-off streets. This was so much fun for our community. BJ Newsome, "To whom it may concern, I would like to ask you to open up Main Street on Saturdays, or at the very least, wait until 4:00 PM to close it down. We are regular shoppers at Nana's, and on Saturdays, it's the only day we can get by there. With an elderly mom, it is most difficult to have to park blocks away and walk. Thank you for your consideration of this." This is from Bonnie and Kelly Waters from Fayetteville, Arkansas. "Why is Main Street closed at North Little Rock on Saturdays? Who sets up tables, chairs, and tents to leave them empty, as if an event has taken place, but there are none? Who pays for the setup? My guess is a taxpayer. As if the pandemic is not enough to hurt businesses, but this ridiculous closing of Main Street is stupidity at its best. Who do you work for, the people yourselves? Please explain me how this is okay." This is from Nana's Organics. "The city of North Rock and our Jenna downtown council shut down Main Street all day Saturdays after the owner of Reno's took around a petition and asked the businesses to sign it. From the first Saturday, the streets were closed. Our business dropped from $400 to $500 worth of businesses to $40, and I have voiced complaints. I've been told repeatedly, nothing is going to change. I'm going into debt weekly with my business. I have survived COVID. I have survived downtown politics, which I have no interest in, but I have not been able to recover from them closing the street in front of my business on the busiest shopping day of the week for any retail. I'll be closing or moving my business at the end of the year if I can make it that long, unless something changes. We have had Saturdays where everyone in our door complains about the street being closed. We have numerous calls about this also. We've been gripped out and questioned constantly. I am only asked to open the streets back up during the day on Saturdays. This This is a win-win-win. I get to remain in business for our customers to shop with. The restaurants get their nighttime dining, and all of the non-alcoholic businesses get to operate without being hindered. Please help me save our business. Thank you for your time. Amanda Wilson, owner of Nana's Organic Grocery. The tents in the street during the day benefit no one. No one uses them. I have pictures if anybody wants to see them." This is an email from Howard Wilson. "My name is Howard Wilson. My wife is the owner of Nana's Organics Grocery Store. I'm writing to voice complaint about Main Street being closed all day on Saturday. Saturday is the biggest shopping day of the week by far for every retailer, including ours. Closing the street in front of our business for tents to sit empty until evening has decimated our grocery sales and overall business. It is my understanding that the daytime closures, due to petition Reno's had done, because they did not want to take tents down and put them back up, and is not what the city council intended nor planned to happen. I'm writing to ask the city council to do away with Reno's petition, reopen Main Street on the 300 block during the day Saturday. Considering that the tents remain empty until well into the afternoon each and every Saturday, this will not affect the bars, evening and nighttime businesses at all, nor will it change the public coming at night to enjoy outdoor dining. We repeatedly voiced these complaints in the weekly restaurant owners' meeting, hosted by Chris Kent, but no one there seems to care that all non-bars are losing business because of this. Please help save our business." This is from Jimmy Arne. "We don't have much time to vote. Any of you who have already voted, please look at the candidates real close. It is very important that we select someone that will not embarrass the city and keep decency in the mayor's office. A number of us would suggest Debbie Ross, who has proven that she is more than capable and qualified of handling the mayor's job. This year, the election is very important to all positions and holders of elected offices."
Thank you very much. Any council members have anything for the good of the order? Ms. Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor. At the last council meeting, I had stated that we needed to hire two additional code enforcement officers. Now, let me say, Mayor Smith has done a wonderful job. And Mayor Smith, as we know, administration will end December 31st. And Mayor, we will miss you. But now, in order to pay for those two additional code officers, council members, I just want you all to think about this. I'm suggesting that we take the chief of staff position. We voted for that position in, back when Mayor Smith first took office. He had a chief of staff prior to Mayor Smith. And I believe that we take the chief of staff position that will pay for two code officers, as well as benefits for the code officers. That's just a suggestion. And I know Mayor Smith has stated budget hearings start at November the 9th, at which time, we will be looking at the budget. But I want us to look at decreasing the staff by one person in the mayor's office and take that salary towards hiring two additional code officers. Y'all can call the young woman and talk to me about it. Bye.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Mayor, yeah, I was listening to the comments about, about the restaurant inside the, the furniture store. I mean, what, what can we do to provide them with relief on a Saturday? I mean, it, obviously, it's a problem, so what, what can we do to help them?
What?
What can we do to help Nana's Organic?
Well, I believe they've opened up that lane to get into, to Galaxy on Saturday afternoon. So, you know, I mean, it's kind of a little bit frustrating to me that, you know, there's never been as many people downtown as we have on Friday nights and Saturday nights, that these people don't use their marketing skills to work those people and to get them into their businesses. You know, there might be five people come by there on Saturday, when, on Saturday night, we have 500 down there. So, my advice to Wayne, and all these letters were from Wayne's friends, you know, take that opportunity and work the crowd. But, I mean, certainly, you know, the weather's going to get us, and they're probably going to shut that down here in the next two or three weeks. But I look forward to it to happen again next spring, because it's been so very successful. If you'll talk to Karen at Convention and Visitors Bureau and look at the sales tax numbers of our downtown restaurants, it's unbelievable how well they've done in, in the pandemic. So, I'm not, I'm not second-guessing my decision to do this at all. But I'll certainly talk to you about it more. Mr. Hyde?
Yeah, just a couple of things, just a couple of things. And Jimmy Arne beat me to one of them, but I was just going to make sure, to remind everybody that we only got a week to go before the election. So, if you hadn't voted, vote. If you're planning on voting, keep on planning and get down there and vote. Seven more days, and I know we got two or three candidates here on city council tonight that are running for something. So, I know they're wanting people to get out and vote. I'm just telling everybody to, you know, remind them that exercise your, your patriotism and your, your rights. Get out there and vote. The other thing that I have to say tonight is, beat Bryant. North Little Rock Chargers Wildcats are playing Bryant Friday night at Wildcat Stadium. And, and there's a few tickets available, but for all of us, people that graduated from North Little Rock High School, we sure like the way things are going down there. We just want to beat Bryant Friday night.
Amen. Mr. Harris, did you have something?
I was just going to talk about the, the street closing, but I think you've, you've answered that for now. So, we'll, we'll be researching it.
Okay. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I just want to address Mr. Hyde. I thought he was getting ready to tell us to vote early and vote often. And we can only vote once there, Charlie.
That's right. That's what, one of the president, one of the presidents, uh, guy's running for president, saying vote off, vote early and vote often, and bail it in, do it in person, just do it.
Anybody else? Ms. Ross?
I just want to comment on voting, early voting. Been down there every day, early voting. And so, it, it's really, they've picked up. The times, I know the lines Monday and Tuesday were huge, but the past, it's probably been like 30-minute wait, unless you want to go at 8:00 in the morning. It seems like everybody's lined up first thing in the morning. So, if you can space it out during the day, best time to go vote is about quarter till 6:00, and you can walk right in. I didn't wait any.
You know, remember, you can vote in Little Rock, too.
Right.
And the, one of the locations is right across from Little Rock City Hall. And I went over there because the line was so long, and I got in and out in five minutes. So.
Pick your time.
Those are options over there for you. Okay, with that, how about a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Don't move.
Hold the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson? Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.